Morning, morning. It's about three after nine. Like call. Welcome everyone here and ask, is there any business that needs to be transacted out of our April 22nd commission meeting? Seeing none, that meeting is now adjourned. Ms. DeLiberto, will you please call, roll call for our May 6th meeting?
Commissioner Ammons.
Here.
Commissioner Knight.
Here.
Commissioner Scales.
Present.
Commissioner Tyson.
Good morning.
Commissioner Stevens.
I am here, thank you very much. Commissioner Knight is going to lead us in invocation this morning and I believe that we'll get Dr. Hamilton to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. May we stand, please? This is the National Day of Prayer, so please bow your heads. Our dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful day and what a beautiful day you have given us. We thank you for each and every person here and for those who are unable to be here. Lord, we ask that you guide us as we deliberate today on behalf of Jefferson County. We ask that you bless all governments, federal, state, and local, to make the right decisions on behalf of all the citizens. Lord, we ask for your blessings on our military, that they stand firm in the defense of our country and we ask that they do not have to engage in war as we seek peace throughout the world. Lord, we ask you to bless those who have businesses, who strive every day to provide services and goods for our citizens and bless them that they make the right decisions for themselves and for their customers and for their employees. And Lord, we ask that you bless those who teach our children, that they may be guided by your hand and that these schools are continued to be open and safe. Lord, we ask that you, and we thank you for the freedom to worship you and we ask for your blessings each and every day. Lord, we thank you and ask for your blessings on each and every one of us, especially our families, that we may be the mentors and the guidance to them and these children as they come up, that they will be guided by your hand. Lord, we ask that you bless all of those who have been affected by the COVID and we ask that you give your guiding hand to the scientists as they continue to seek the cure and seek the ways to prevent this virus from continuing to spread. And we ask that you bless them in their continuing research on other diseases like cancer so that this may one day be absolved. Lord, we, finally, we ask that you bless each and every one of us and everyone working together to heal this division that seemingly is spreading in the country so that this country may be one and we ask that you bless each person in this country and give them grace. Lord, again, we thank you for all your many blessings and this we all ask in Jesus' name, if you'll join me in saying, amen.
Amen.
Attention, clear.
Clear. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the brother which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Commissioner Knight.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Dr. Hamilton. Commissioners, we have several zoning hearings today and it seems to be very fortunate that we have only the applicants that are here to, there is no opposition that has applied for this. Is there anyone in the audience that is against any of these applications? Well, we'll go through our due process, Michael, and make sure that everyone does get an opportunity. Z21-005 Crimson Oak, Oak Grove Resources LLC owner Stephen Blankenship. He wants to change zoning from A1 to I3. Michael?
Oh, yes, so this is just a compliance case. There's a small portion of the Oak Grove Mine property that's currently zoned agricultural and they've applied for some minor permits on the property, bore holes, so they can support the underground mining activities in the area. And so, again, this is just a quick request to, for compliance purposes. Planning is only recommended in the condition just to protect a few residents that are right there along Wood Creek Road.
Thank you. Like open public hearing at this time, case Z21-005. You know, when the audience speaking in favor of or in opposition to this particular zoning case? Seeing none, it's closed.
I do have a question real quick.
Yes, sir.
This is going to I3 Industrial.
Yes, sir.
Is there any chance that it would be used for something more than the bore holes?
Um, this is all part of the Oak Grove Mine Facility.
Okay.
So they've already got several, you know, the mine shafts, there are administrative offices, that sort of thing. Again, the only, the genesis for this request was to, for those bore holes and it's highly unlikely there would be any other sort of activity, the applicants, if you get questions regarding that, but.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
I move the item.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Case Z21-007. Michael and Judith Arnold, owners and Todd Thompson agent, request change in zoning from E2 estate to CP preferred on 5,000 Cohaba River Road. Is there anyone in the audience, like to open a public hearing on this case? Is there anyone in the audience in opposition to or in favor of this? Seeing none, the public hearing closed.
Move the item.
Items moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Case Z21-008. Mary Beard and Ricky Forrest, owners, Bobby Hornsby agent. This property is located at 8145 Glendale Farms Road, Trussville, Alabama. The recommendation from P&amp;Z is approved. They want to change zoning from I2 to A1. Like to open a public hearing on Z21-008. Is there anyone in the audience speaking in favor of or in opposition to this?
I'm here for, I'm Bobby Hornsby, I'm here for mothers, if you have a question.
Bobby, are you in favor of it?
Yes, sir.
All right, we're good to go. Any, anyone else? Public hearing is now closed.
Move the item.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next is Z21-009. Oxmoor Holdings LLC, Tim Burns agent, changed from CP professional to C1 for an office and warehouse. P&amp;Z recommend, recommended approval with conditions, there are two conditions on it. Use of the property should be limited to the requested electrical contractors' offices and warehouses and the other architectural design of the proposed structure of the property shall be subject to the approval of the planning and zoning. I'd like to open a public hearing now for case Z21-009. Is there anyone in the audience in favor of or in opposition to this particular item? I see everybody nodding their head yet, so. There being none? Public hearing is closed.
Move the item.
Items moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Alan Needmeyer, owner and agent, request change in zoning from I3 to A1 for residential use. Property is located on Taylor Ferry Road, 9531 Taylor Ferry Road. P&amp;Z recommends approval. Like to open a public hearing for Z21-0010. Anyone in the audience in favor of or in opposition to this? I get thumbs up. Public hearing is now closed. Chair will entertain a motion.
Thank you.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Guys, that was a very, very pleasant zoning meet, hearing we had today and they don't usually go that way. So y'all enjoy and we appreciate you doing business in Jefferson County. Next, we have approval of the minutes from the commission meeting on April 22nd, 2021. Yes, sir.
We have one more, one more, one more public hearing.
I have one more? I had ten, oh, Economic Development Public Hearing, that's, I'm sorry, Steve. Public hearing to address comments, concerns from cities pertaining to resolution authorizing the execution of a funding agreement for the distribution of funds to support of the World Police and Fire Games. I'll turn this over to Commissioner Ammons.
Yes, sir, this is just to operate with the under 772, to make sure that this is, complies with state law, that it's in good and just purpose for the, for the public, for the World Police and Fire Games that will be here in 2025.
So this is a good thing?
Yes, sir.
And it's expenditure of public funds for a good and sufficient public purpose, which is for the sport of the World Games?
Just for reference, the World Police and Fire Games is estimated to have a $75 million economic impact and will have twice the number of competitors and visitors as the World Games will. So it's, it will be a big, a big event on the tail of the World Games, which will be another fantastic event.
Not, not to minimize the importance of the World Games.
Move the item.
Second.
All right, well, let's open the public hearing first.
Oh, we have a public hearing.
Yeah, we got a public, a public hearing for the 772 requirements for this particular economic development item. Is there anyone in the audience that would speak in favor of or in opposition to this particular item? Seeing none, the 772 requirements have been met through the public hearing process and the chair will entertain a motion.
Move the item.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Now, April 22nd, 2021, we had a commission meeting here and I can remember it and I think that those. Minutes are okay, anybody else agree with me?
I'll move the dispatch with the reading of the minutes and the fact that it's presented.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, we have 50 resolutions that we're considering, there are two that I would like to pull.
Yeah, I have one too.
And it's 17 and 18. I would like for those, just to, to remove those from the agenda.
Mr. President, and I am asking for item number 50 to be set aside, please.
Okay, so we have two to be removed and one to be set aside for separate consideration. Would you make that form of a motion?
Yes.
We have a motion.
My motion, Mr. President, that we approve items 1 through 49, with the exception of 50 for further discussion. Also, items 16 and 17 to be withdrawn.
17 and 18, I think.
17 and 18.
17 and 18, yeah.
I'm sorry, to be withdrawn.
We have a motion. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We have number 50, Commissioner Scales.
Yes, sir. On item 50, I wanted to, we can go ahead and move on the item, obviously. I still have just a little apprehension there in regards to the project at hand, so therefore I wanted to just abstain from it. So if we can move forward with it, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
I move the item.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. You want to call, roll call vote?
Yes, please.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner Ammons.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Aye.
Commissioner Scales.
Abstain.
Commissioner Tyson.
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens.
Yes, thank you. Okay, do we have any items for new business? All right. Mr. Lawson, do you need to address the body? County Manager Patelis.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Tyson.
Yeah, I wanted to give you some papers, you should have received emails on some items that I had posted about yesterday. So I do have some hard copies and I might give them to you. I just wanted to make sure that we, that I did pass them out. And yes, we, a district office number has been, several calls for that, that's 205-902-907101. And it's actually on, see, I can, you know, 20th Street, Suite 325.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm gonna get time about that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ammons?
Hope everybody was safe from the storms and the flooding. The other item would be that there are a good number of restaurants and construction sites that are suffering for employees. Anybody that, that is looking for a job, especially in construction, please contact the Association of Builders and Contractors and they will be happy to pitch you for a job site that is in desperate need. And then any restaurant out there is always, always looking for folks, so there are jobs available and they're looking for folks desperately.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Knight?
It is National Day of Prayer, so keep everybody in your prayers.
Commissioner Scales?
Well, first of all, I want to say good morning to everyone. Very thankful for our teachers this week, it's Teachers Appreciation Week and we really do, on behalf of the Jefferson County Commission, that we appreciate our teachers for the hard work that they give to our students so that they can be productive members of society. Also want to remind everyone that we do have a vaccination site, which is at AOH Cathedral across church. There is a website that you have to go to just to make sure that you are officially making an appointment and so that you can be able to do what you need to do then, so if you want to be vaccinated, there's an opportunity for you to do so. Also, I want to say to all of our moms on this week, and especially this can be a trying week for some who have lost their mother, but for those who have a living mother, I'm encouraging all of us to just take a moment, a deep breath, and appreciate those women who have served as, as our mothers and those who are mothers to children who may not even be their own. So I wanted to say Happy Mother's Day to my colleague, Commissioner Tyson, to all of our mothers within Jefferson County. How proud I am of you. It's, it's a tough job, but God made us for it and so I'm thankful for that and I just wanted to make sure that we do that. One last thing is, I got a note that they said that Willie May's birthday is today. So I want to say happy birthday in his honor as well. My last thing that I wanted to say, just for the record, obviously, any expansion that BJCC does, I'm going to be in support of, I just had some reservations as relates to, there are just some things that we need to get together on. So I just wanted to make sure that I explained that. I think that Commissioner Ammons is doing a lot. We both are working together and trying to make sure that there are opportunities here in Jefferson County that are sorely needed. So I appreciate it, Mr. President, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I want to echo what you said about the being Mother's Day. We're all here because of our mothers and God bless them. They, I know that they put up with a lot with me growing up, so I, I appreciate everything that she's done. She made me who I am today and we appreciate that. I do want to express my appreciation to our county workers. Saw them out yesterday, roadblocks, working on ditches, taking care of things that, that, that we never even consider as far as working. Water was over roads and was up in places where I've never seen it that bad before through residential neighborhoods that you never, that you never see. I posted on Facebook, my backyard, it looked like a lake, that, you don't see that. Had people saying, are you dropping a line out in your backyard? So, but it's, it's back to normal now and a lot of that has to do with how good our county workers are and the job that they do daily. And I want to just tell them thank you and I appreciate their engagement and what they do. Sometimes it's a thankless job. I call Cal probably daily with either a garbage complaint or a road complaint and it's, they're always handling, they're always, it's always working and we appreciate the engagement that, that our county workers have with, with our citizens because we're here because of the job that you do and we certainly do appreciate that.
I heard, I heard in that light, I heard that on one of the news reports that this amount of rain in such a short a time, six or seven inches, has it been? The last time something like that was in 1906, so this was kind of a hectic event. I echo your, your sentiments to the, to the road people. We had a couple of calls where, you know, trees were even down over the road and boom, they got them, so I agree.
They've done a good job and now we have to worry about cutting all of the grass, it's just wonderful rain that's grown. So it's always, it's, it's a never ending and we just want to tell everyone thank you, we appreciate that. Commissioner Tyson?
I just wanted to, I'm glad Commissioner Scales brought up mothers. My father died when I was five and my mother died when I was a little over 10 years old and I can, I remember people stepping up, ramming the bush for me when I was growing up and I just wanted to tell my daughter, she is a great mother. I couldn't have picked a better mother for my grandkids than Porsha Bender. She is the best mom and I think she really, she don't look at the county commission meeting, but I hope her friends do. She hate politics. And because she really is, and I, and she deserved the kudos for my two girls, the way her and her husband are raising them. They are Christians, they are in very, they're active in the community. I just, it was a blessing for her to be mine, for me to be her mother and for her to be my daughter, but she's a great mom. And I want us to visit some older person that children might, might not have kids or they be deceased. We will be passing out baskets and, and bags to, all the way up to Sunday and I want to thank my staff for doing this outside of their duties at the counties and these are for senior citizens that's sick and shed in and for people who are, just don't have children, don't have anyone to love on them. And I just want to wish all of the moms a Happy Mother's Day and kudos for you, our Commissioner Scales, with your two girls, two happy mucks.
One thing before we leave. This is probably going to be the most serious thing that we've said today. I saw that there was another shooting last night. We're going to have to stop the violence. I'm speaking to those who are pulling the triggers, this is Mother's Day, guys. Let's stop and reflect on what we're doing and why we're doing it. And if you stop and reflect on your life, you will stop committing these senseless acts of violence. There is no need for that in Birmingham, Alabama, or in Jefferson County. This is the National Day of Prayer. Let's pray. Let's, all citizens, demand a better Birmingham, a better Jefferson County and one without this senseless violence. It's become a systemic problem in all of our cities and it doesn't have to be that way. If we, the citizens, expect more and demand more, if you see something, say something. Hold these that are doing this accountable. With that being said, this meeting is, yes, ma'am?
Before you finish.
I am.
You, you and I have a constituent, and I'm sorry, I failed to mention it, Florence Bailey, Theo Bailey, Pastor Theo Bailey's wife transitioned, she lived in Adamsville and so her service will be on Friday. She will have an official resolution from us that has been asked to, to give, but I was once a member of the church. So I wanted to make sure that I brought it before the attention of the commission because Pastor Theo Bailey, my understanding, wanted to make sure that, that she was remembered here and so I wanted to make sure that I do that. And the only thing I will tell you is that, Mr. President, I cannot say how much I concur because the person who was killed last night, again, is in my district and, and they're out of the East Precinct and every chance I get, I'mma always remind us, this is what I was talking about and it is, it is, it is more crazier than we want to admit. It is, it's sad. And this person was 62 years old, 62, and, and it's just, it's getting really interesting. So that same East Precinct I talked about last year, that's who had to respond to that crime. So again, pray for our Sheriff's Department and just pray for all of our departments. We're in a unique time that I think that people are taking law enforcement into their own hands and if we don't have an aggressive plan about it and we, like you said, as citizens, don't warrant and demand better, it's not going to do anything but continue to get worse. So I thank you for saying that, just because I was, I had read that and I knew last night, after speaking to an officer, that they were getting ready to get off and had to go back on duty to respond to that particular call. to respond to that particular call in Kingston. So thank you, Mr. President, for acknowledging that, I appreciate it.
Yeah, and when we get ready to allocate and find some ways of spending this money, we need to look at the programs, and I've talked to you about this before, President Stevens, about youth games and the, and the, I know the activities that they had in the communities. When I was growing up, they did away, they took the resources away when the money was less. But we got to bring those programs back. And that's some things, there's a whole list of things that we need to look at and have an open mind. And it's, in our community, it's shooting, but in your community, it's drugs. So either way, they both killing our people. So we need to address these drugs, and we need to address the guns, they both are deadly.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. This meeting is recessed with further notice, thank you.